The meeting is now called to order. I need a motion to approve the modified agenda as we'll be removing the grade pay scale item. That was under Chad's portion of the meeting.
Some movement, President.
A second? Probably moved and seconded in further discussion. On favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Aye.
Also let the record show that Commissioner Boyd is online with us this morning. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, how are you?
Good. Any questions on the purchase order? There are none. We do have quite a few internal budget revisions. Mr. Wine, would you go over it, please?
The same as last week. It's time of year where everyone tries to get stuff to balance. The first one is from the assessor from account 406 requesting permission to move $329 from account 216, which maintenance and repair to equipment, to account 341, which is materials and supplies. Another one from the assessor in account 406 to move $1,348 from 568 contribution to other to 341, which is materials and supplies. The third one from the assessor, I would ask that we not approve. There's a typo and we don't have clarification. It was for $200 to move $200 from account 210 to 341. That's incorrect. There's a typo and we don't have clarification. So I'd recommend we not approve that one. We'll deal with that next week. Tim Zaya is asking to move $2,000 from contract services to travel from Department 731, which is a DRC. Account 424, which your courthouse, a request from me to move $100,000 from 215, which is maintenance and repair, building to 226, which is insurance and bonds. Me again in account 424 to move $28,000 from 223, which is professional services to 226, insurance and bonds. Me again, account 442, your federal grants, to move $215,576 from 566 contribution others to five, excuse me, 568 contribution others to 566, transfer to other funds. 717, Central Garage, to move $1,000 from 105 Insurance to 104 FICA. The communications line item in Fund One from me to move $145 from 230, which is contractual services, to 341, which is materials and supplies. 717 again to move $15,000 from 223 Professional Services to 103, which is salaries. A request from Clerk Petrucci in Department 402 to move $3,000 from materials and supplies to travel, which is 214, and that's it.
Okay, just for clarification, Mr. President, we're just moving these monies around. We're in the last month of our budget and so we're just kind of moving money around just to kind of cover all our costs where we may have a little surplus setting somewheres to go, move to someplace else.
Yeah, it's in every department. You're not moving outside of departments.
Right, we're just trying to balance everything up.
That's right.
Just for the public's knowledge, understand while we're moving these monies around, we're just going to the end of our budget cycle and we're just trying to get everything synced up here and pull monies from where we need it.
That's correct.
Very good. With that being said, Mr. President, I would make the motion that we accept these, pulling out the one from the assessor's office that had the typo in it.
Okay, well, we'll catch that in the consent agenda.
Okay.
And we'll pull it out then, okay?
I'm sorry, I'm still gonna need to do that one, let's see.
Okay, new hire recommendation received from the Honorable Rob Blair, shared for Kelly Gardner as a part-time process server with a compensation rate of $17.83 an hour effective 6/16/25. New hire recommendation received from the Honorable Larry Hess Assessor for Heather Buford Newton as a transfer clerk with an annual salary of $35,360, start date to be determined. Change of status received from the Honorable Rob Blair, shared for Sergeant Thomas Funk at for a step increase for years of service, where the salary changed from $79,268 to $80,854 effective 6/15/2025. Change of status received from Mike Lang, Chief Court Marshal, for Assistant Court Marshal Terrence Sahonic for a step increase for years of service, where the salary changed from $74,586 to $76,823 effective 6/21/25. Letter of resignation received from the Honorable Larry Hess Assessor for Syria Bean, Clerk, effective 5/29/25, and a letter of resignation received from the Honorable Larry Hess Assessor for Jane Mitchum, personal property clerk, effective 5/28/25. We'll go ahead and do the minutes. Let's go ahead and approve the minutes for May 29th. Commissioner Whitaker was not present, so I need a motion to approve those minutes.
Sure, Mr.
A second? Probably moved and seconded in further discussion. On favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, ayes have it.
Aye.
Change due to absence.
And have an extension from Commissioner Whitaker. Engineering has brought forth this morning a bond release for Bridle Creek Phase 5 Section 1 lots 289 through 304 and 249 to 372. That's BCP file number 32102-061. It has tied to 2112-447 and 021-013. That's bond number 100475612. Also recommendation for Bridle Creek Phase 5 Section 1 lots 378 through 392, that's BCP file number 2411-389. That's tied to 2211-351, 2112-447 and 021-013. Bond number 100435722, and engineering making that recommendation. Anybody have any questions for Doug on that? Nope, okay. Need a motion for the consent agenda and Commissioner Hardy, if you'd make your motion again.
Yeah, Mr. President, I move that we accept the consent agenda, pulling out the one transfer of funds from the Mr. Hess's office that had the typo in it.
Right, and that was from line 211 to 341 and that was, the amount was $200, so we'll pull that out.
It was, the typo was from account 210 to 341 for $200, yes.
Okay, all right, that's, all right. Very good. Okay, it's been motion, need a second.
Second.
And probably moved and seconded in further discussion. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, ayes have it. Very good. Next up is the assessor. Thank you, Doug.
Good morning.
Good morning, Larry.
Good morning.
Well, yeah, let's see, I've got, I wasn't here last week, so I've got a couple of weeks of exoneration here. The majority of them are personal property exoneration. Got a total of 20 of them, three pages there, and they're all for the reasons that's listed there. Most of them are double billed and wrongly billed, added an extra number or whatever, but the total on those 20 exoneration's personal property are $7,974.44.
All right, I need a motion to approve the personal tax exoneration for officer error.
So moved, Mr. President.
Second.
Moved and seconded in further discussion. On favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, ayes have it.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
The only other thing I have, I do have two for the real estate. We had to correct two, had to make two exoneration's on real estate. One was wrong tax class and the other one was, should have had a name added and it was not added on there, so. But in rate the total for those two was $2,025.23 for those two.
Very good. Heard the ask from the assessor on the officer here on the real estate.
Should approve. Second.
The motion, second. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, ayes have it.
Aye.
Good, that's all I have.
All right, Larry, thank you.
All right, you all have a good day.
No, I'm good. I'm fine now. Okay, next up, board meeting reports.
Do you want me to start?
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm sure Mr. Boyd has been a...
I don't have it.
Yes, sir. Yeah, so I had my regular scheduled planning commission meeting on Monday night and it was just a regular standard planning commission meeting. It was not a lot on the agenda, moved pretty quickly and smoothly, and that's the only meeting that I had on the boards. I also, we had a meeting this morning with the company that is proposing the solar project and falling waters, just a continuation of conversation with them about community outreach and things that they're looking for from the community and from the county and I think that's the only ones I had.
We had a health department...
Oh, we, yes, sir, we did. We had a health department meeting. We met with the health department in regards to some issues that they are having with property and falling waters with some illegal sewer systems and some sewage being put onto the, onto the ground. And so we are working through that with the health department. We're going to get our legal team involved and we will try to figure out a way to remedy that problem as best we can on the county side and maybe try to get the state involved. The state doesn't really seem to want to be involved, but we'll continue to work through that and we had one other meeting, didn't we?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, they've all, there's been, it's all sorts to run together. Oh, we had a meeting with our lobbying firm and some representatives from Senator Capito's office and also some representatives from the board or the committee that Senator Capito chairs, which is EPW, is the Environmental and Public Works. We were having some discussions with them in regards to our very unique situation that Berkeley County finds itself in for stormwater management. So we are working through that with Senator Capito's office and some of her Senate colleagues to see if there's some remedy maybe to be found in the county's MS4 permit and moving forward. So that's very, very preliminary and I'm not exactly sure where that goes, where it ends up, but it's definitely a conversation that we are having. Very good.
Mr. Whitaker?
Believe it or not, during my absence for the last several meetings, I apologize for not being here, but life does kind of continue to run. I was able to attend my airport authority meeting and it's, not a whole lot's changed other than we're still working through the fuel sales and getting reacquainted and back with the Jet A sale. So we did have a, an amendment to our bylaws as far as for the positions of, on our board and the executive, I should say, the officers position. Worked through that and short story is, budget's really squeaky, but we're surviving it, so.
Mr. Scott?
Yes, sir. Just had two board meetings over the last week. Public Sewer District and all projects are going well, no updates or no great news and followed by a stormwater meeting and at this point, still waiting to try to get our individual permit from the West Virginia DEP. An ongoing saga that'll never end probably.
Also wanted to mention an update on our ambulance service. As you know, last week we approved the new fees for transport in the ambulance world and those fees are, they didn't waste any time, they're already in place and are active and they expect to see revenue changes within 120 days. So last week also, we received two new ambulances from North Carolina. They should be in service by next week and one will be at Hedgesfield and one will be at Bennington. And the great news is we've got several more on the way here, so the fleet will be in great shape by the end of the summer, so.
Now, were they in Tar Heel color or Duke color?
What?
What color were they? Were they Tar Heel or were they Duke?
I think they're going to be Berkeley County colored. So, gold and blue.
Yeah, as John had mentioned, he and I attended a meeting with the health department and it seemed like nearly every turn that we're making that DEP is part of the conversation with the problems that we're having and just trying to get their cooperation has been a little bit of a challenge. And also, as John mentioned, you know, the MS4 that we're currently in was this county volunteered for and later on, we were actually threatened with fines, very heavily fines if we did not implement a fee structure to support that. So as the administration has changed, we're looking to see, you know, is there's an opportunity for us to possibly not be involved in that. So just asking questions and like you said, we don't know exactly where that will land, but you know, everybody complains to us about that particular fee, so we're looking to see if it could be done away with or if we have to continue with it. That's where we're at today.
And I would like to personally thank, I forgot to mention this, our lobbying firm that the Berkeley County uses, Chris Strovel, who represents Senator Capito in this area, was pivotal in that and the Senator for having her people reach out to us and, you know, we all know that the stormwater management fee is the most hated thing in the county and we are just working through to see what our options are and what, you know, what can be done. Maybe nothing can be done, maybe something can be done, but the Senator's been very kind with her time in offering us up people from that committee to try to move forwards and that's all we can do is work on it.
Very good.
I'm going to say one more thing. West Virginia DEP, it's incredibly frustrating to deal with them. I mean, it's so inept and they can't make a decision. And the decision for our permit's been going on for over three years now and they can't make a decision on them. And as the public needs to understand what we're dealing with when we deal with the West Virginia DEP. And it doesn't matter if it's about our permit for MS4 or if it's about the situation you're all dealing with down at the north end of the county, zero, zero, help. It's bad.
Yeah, I mean locally, they've, we've got a good working relationship with the local guy when it comes to stormwater management stuff. I know he works very closely with our engineer. So local, we do have some of that cooperation, but at the state level is what's very frustrating. Okay, so we did receive a reappointment package back from Mayor Knowles for the Brooklyn Development Authority and also there's an appointment for Shanita Wine to the Brooklyn County Ambulance Authority?
Yes, I'd like to make that motion. That we appoint Shanita Wine to the Brooklyn County Emergency Ambulance Authority.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded in further discussion. On favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, ayes have it. Also...
Reappointment for Mayor Knowles?
Yes, please.
So moved. Second, that.
Okay, that's a reappointment for Kevin Knowles, Mayor of the city of Martinsburg, for the Brooklyn Development Authority. It's been moved and seconded in further discussion. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it, thank you. Okay, Will, are you ready? We'll go ahead and move you up if you would, please.
Good morning, all.
Good morning.
This morning, we have 31 estates for final slash interim settlement for the month of June 2025. All estates proposed for settlement this morning are identical to those found in your read ahead. Additionally, all estates proposed for settlement have been legally or actually noticed of their proposed pending settlement status as prescribed by West Virginia law. Furthermore, my office has received no written notice of objection to date from any interested parties of these states herein. Lastly, all claims of debt publicly filed against each of these estates have either been released as paid in part or in full by the creditors themselves or the estate has been declared to be insolvent, meaning no probate assets remain to pay heirs, beneficiaries, and creditors alike. Without objection from any present interested party in the audience today, I ask for this commission's consideration for the approval of the 31 estates for final or interim settlement in the month of June 2025.
Okay, need a motion to approve the settlement list as presented by our fiduciary supervisor.
So moved.
It's been moved?
Second.
And second, in further discussion. On favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you, Will.
Appreciate the job y'all doing down there. I get a lot of good positive feedback from our community about what y'all do for people on that.
You acquired my office very, very well.
Thank you.
All these other ones are going to take a few minutes to get us... Gary, why don't you go ahead and bring us up on the ground maintenance?
Gladly, gladly. So, as you recall, the commission opened bids on the 29th of May for...
So, as you recall, the commission opened bids on the 29th of May for mowing services, ground maintenance service for Pike Side Waterway, about 16 acres, and Sportsman's Paradise, about 32.5 acres. The only response was your current vendor, CND Property Management, and they responded at the same rates that you've been paying. They're doing a great job. Jack has no issues. So the recommendation is that the commission, and this was a bid for a five-year contract. As you all know, you can only do one year at a time. So this will be year one of an option for four out years. So if the commission so chooses, we're recommending you approve the contract to CND Property Management out of Inwood.
Very good. Any discussion on that?
It's just a really fair rate.
It is. They mowed it. Of course, May is always a heavy month because it rains a lot. It was like 30 couple hundred dollars for that month, but we figured better part of just shy of 31 acres of mowing, 30 acres, that's not bad. They do a good job.
Difficult acres.
Yeah, the waterway is not fun.
Okay, need a motion to approve the ground maintenance to CND Property Maintenance?
So moved, Mr. President.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? On favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, ahs have it.
You can do the ordinance, Eddie. It's not time relative. We can do it now if you want.
Okay. So you have in front of you, proposed by your bond council, the bond ordinance for your series 2025A Inwood Park Bonds. The ordinance reflects the net proceeds of $3 million or a sale of $3 million of bonds to support and match the now over an additional $3 million of grants for Phase One of the Inwood Park. Your building commission has met twice in public to facilitate the process. So this is the next step for the county commission to adopt the ordinance that will move on to additional processes. I think next week is the next one. Penny, am I right? Is it next week? And just the next step. So if the commission sees fit to continue moving forward, we just need you to adopt the ordinance.
So moved. Second.
Okay. Great work. Saying that, been a long time coming and we appreciate all the work by staff to get us to this point and by CEC and others. Region Nine, just been wonderful and people up there can't wait.
Yeah, I always like to give a shout out to Region Nine. Region Nine is one of those organizations a lot of people don't know much about. They don't really know what they do, but they are very, very important to getting our bonds secured and handling all the paperwork and not only just handling once we receive the bonds and the funds, but going out and finding those dollars a lot of times. Yeah, on the grant side. On the grant side, yes, sir. On the grant side. Yeah. People don't understand, they're more project managers than they are finders, right? So I can tell you from one of your staff people who was just involved in some CDBG money, federal monies to construct in addition to the health department, Jennifer Wishmeyer, worth their way in gold. They can answer questions, and David Neemer and Rachel and all of them can answer questions in acronyms, answers to acronyms that Chad and I just look at them with what? So yeah, they're worth their way in gold.
Yeah, and on this, on Friday Chad and I met with, on a pre-bid meeting for this park. We had 12 different construction firms there to bid on this. So I think we'll get a really good return on those rates. So looking forward to that.
And the public needs to understand it, you know, it's a $6 million project for Phase One and over $3 million now is grant money that we've secured either through the federal government, state, and other, you know, federal agencies. So it's really special. It is wonderful.
Very good. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, ahs have it. Okay, yeah, we'll go flip back over and do our bid opening at 10 o'clock.
Yes, sir. You have a bid opening for a drug testing analyzer in the day report center. You do have the certification of publication. It was published on your website and distributed to known vendors of interest. You have two responses. I believe you have three. One came late. I got a text a few minutes ago that it showed up at another building, but either way you have two functional responses. These will be used, right now, we have historically, in many instances, we use a lab and ship some of that stuff out for testing. Tim, in his efforts and continued efforts to be diligent with tax dollars, said, hey, look, the return on investment, if we invest in one of these is about a year. So if we invest now, we'll be, we'll be on the other side of an expense in about 12 months. So money's there, put it out, so we'll see where the prices come in. And you have two responses. You're ready, you're good.
Cost of the product is $6,125 each. And they have it broken down by tax as well. And they are out of Hilton, Florida. Safety Solutions, SSI LLC, Hilton, Florida.
Never seen one that impressive.
And it's a Drager drug testing, $5,000. So Drager's very popular in that world of detection.
What was the first bid amount?
Cost of the product is with this company, let me see here, give you the name. It's Siemens Health Ineers. S-I-E-M-B-N-S, Siemens. Health Ineers, as in Mountaineers, is Health Ineers. Cost of the product is $18,000. Then they've got other. But of course, assess to that. Very good. Okay, next up. Chad Weinberger, impact fee schedule.
Morning, sir.
Morning.
Morning.
So this process started when you all elected to engage Tisher Bice back in December as your impact fee consultant. So Tisher Bice went about their work over the last five months. They identified five areas to potentially assess impact fees in the county. Those areas being a county administrative fee, which would be used to continue to help fund facilities such as judicial center expansion or any operational center that is caused, that is needed for additional capacity. Fire and rescue, which goes without saying, the additional capacity, they're feeling it every day. Law enforcement, parks and recreation, as well as schools. What Tisher Bice brought back to you a few weeks ago in their presentation was a representation of the maximum fees that they believe that you are able to assess in this county based on their accounting principles and statutes used across the country. The state of West Virginia provides some guidance of how impact fees can be assessed, but the guardrails for the state are not super tight. That's why Tisher Bice came in, using their considerable experience nationwide to set what they believe are the maximum rates that you can safely assess. The discretion is yours, is the county commission, to assess the rates as you see fit. And also, at this point in time, would be an opportunity if you wanted to see different calculations from Tisher Bice. For example, if you wanted a larger spread of your non-residential fees, that's something that we could do. This would be the time to start having those discussions. We could go back to the consultant at this point in time, look at those non-residential fees, see if we could get more grainer with them, to break them down into more subcategories. You do have five categories right now, industrial, commercial, office, institutional, and lodging. There could be opportunities to do light industrial, heavy industrial, specific warehouse. And that is work that the consultant has done before that we could request out of them. Additionally, it is, Anthony will follow me, having the discussion about the ordinance that will come along with these. And there is a, we have, time is on our side, basically. There's a 60-day period from when you approve the ordinance to the time that we're enabled to, that you're allowed to start collecting the impact fees. So now is the time to start having these discussions, to start setting these fees. If you need more information from the consultant, we can go back to them. But when we started this process, you were also very adamant that although you are not at all required to hold public meetings, that you wanted to do so. And this would be a great opportunity to get those public meetings scheduled, as well as a workshop roundtable meeting. And I have a proposed schedule looking at our calendar, which is very, very busy. But June 17th would be an excellent time to hold two public meetings, do an AM and a PM, which is traditional to what you've done in the past. And then looking at a July 2nd date potentially for your workshop roundtable meeting. And we would just need to figure out with that meeting how you're going to handle that. If that's going to, if you're going to attend that meeting in a quorum, we post that publicly or if two or less of you are going to, need to be posted publicly.
June 17th was your first date?
June 17th. And these are my suggestions. If you have other things that, I mean.
What time of day were you thinking?
Uh, we would do a 10:00 AM and then a 5:00 PM to give public flexibility to attend.
Then it, to expand on Chad's second statement, talking about the roundtable, when we went through the subdivision efforts, you delegated two attendees, which meant it wasn't a county commission meeting. So as your staff, we always throw that out there to you. It's your decision as a board to decide if you want to treat it as a roundtable and then two of you can attend, no more than two of you can attend. But if either of you have passion and you, more than two of you want to be there, remember we'll have to make that a posting of an official meeting if you want to do that. Your decision, just throwing it out there. To Chad's point, this step is for you to decide where you want the fees to be in the five buckets, what they want to look like. You aren't carving any stone today, but Anthony, who will meet with you, he stepped out because he had a tax appeal hearing this morning. He'll be back. When he talks to you about the ordinance, part of that ordinance has the fees in it. So you need to come to a consensus on those fees now. So when you give a direction to publish the ordinance and start that process, you don't want the question marks in those boxes, right? You want values there. They aren't concrete. Until this is all over and done, you adopt it, they aren't final. This will be a working process for the next couple months.
So the meeting in the morning would be with just?
It'd be a public hearing. These are two public hearings.
And the five votes would be public hearings.
It'd be two public hearings, Chad proposing 10:00 AM, 5:00 PM on the 17th of June. And then the July 2nd is a workshop, similar to what you did, Mr. Cadle, with the construction industry on the subdivision regulations. It's your choice if you want it different. Now's the time, you tell us what to do.
I think the roundtable public hearings work well. I think they've been fairly well attended. I, myself, I think that's a very good working way to go about it.
It depends on how many of us are going to be there, because I certainly would like to be there. So if it's going to be three of us, then we need to publicize it, sir. I don't have a problem with publicizing it, I mean.
Yeah, I can tell you, Ed, I did participate in the last roundtable, workshop roundtable with that group and it was, it was very good. It was, it was some give and take and everybody worked very well. And of course, a lot of that credit goes to Brian and Laura, who are with us today. But had a very good working relationship with them. And I think it, not only at the two public meetings, I think it's important that that particular group also have the opportunity to discuss this ordinance and its fee structure. So, you know. I would like to be one of those that attended, so it sounded like just at least three of us would like to be there. I don't know if all five want to be there, that's great too, but it sounds like we do want to make that a public meeting as well. All right? So are those dates okay with everyone? They were okay as far as the calendar we track, so if you haven't, they were. So you're all here as far as we know, unless you know something about your life, we don't.
It was June 17th, correct?
Yes, sir.
I got some reports to cut, but I, there's no factor on good.
And then the Wednesday, July 2, word for everybody also.
Yeah.
Chad, do all three have to be published, Penny, published as meeting?
And the June 17th times were again, I'm sorry, Chad.
10:00 AM and 5:00 PM.
And that's your regular, or no, that's not, that's a Tuesday.
And then the July was?
10:00 AM for your roundtable.
10:00 AM.
Just 10:00 AM.
And that date was July?
July 2nd, Wednesday, July 2nd.
And I don't know about you all, but I would like to see, I did kind of struggle with the commercial and industrial fee. So I would like to see it, if we can break it out a little bit more to identify, because I do believe that different industry or commercial will have different impacts. So I would like to be able to take that out a little bit wider, if we can.
I agree 100%. Yeah, we want to have options there. I think the larger the facility is, the cheaper the square footage price should be. We don't want to hurt the commercial side of this thing at all, in my mind. That's the kind of growth we encourage and want, and we should limit that as much as possible. But at the same time, you want to be fair to the residents if they're paying it dues. But I think we need to have options on the non-residential side for sure.
But that, so you, that won't affect, you're not looking to collect more or less, you're just looking to determine how you're going to collect it, right? So for purpose of discussion and moving forward today, are you going to try and set some values on the five different categories of what you want your impact fee to be?
I'm ready to do that.
Yeah, I'm ready to do that on the commercials, I'm sorry, on the residential side. But the non-residential, I was hoping we would.
Discuss it further?
Yeah, have different options available as far as assigning values to different.
Well, I don't know that any of it is necessarily set in stone. I mean, if we have an idea moving forward, kind of what we're working with, because that gives, that also gives an idea of how those fees move in accordance with one another to make sure that we're assessing the same values on non-residential as we are on residential. So you wouldn't, you know, any conversation, you wouldn't be setting your fees today. That comes when the ordinance is adopted. That would officially set your fees. But just kind of giving, having an idea of which way to move forward.
Where we're headed anyway, just an idea, yeah.
But you wouldn't need to make a motion on any fees today to adopt them.
Okay, but we should, we should be able to have a discussion today, right? Of where we think we need to be or where we need to land in an effort to be fair.
Yes.
And open with this discussion. So this is something, you know, that the community has been asking for, for quite a while. And, but at the same time, you have to think about the person that just wants to go build their own house or this one person goes and contracts with a contractor to build their house. They're not, they're not coming in here building 500 houses at a time. So in an effort to be fair, I think is what is important to all. Whether you're building one or 500, it's. Whether you, whether you're building one or 500, it's, we, we would like to be fair. And, and that's, that's the, the number we need to determine, uh, what we think is fair. So even though it's, it will not be etched in stone today, uh, but it gives us a point to work off of. And I don't mind throwing my, my original number out was, was $5,000 a household, that when that number, uh, you come to get your building permit for your new home, that was a $5,000 impact fee. Um, and I'm, I'm open to discussion, uh, and I'm open to change, uh, but, but that, that gives us a start, so.
Well, the, the total that we're, uh, maxed out at is $11,657. And the majority of that, over $7,000, was earmarked for Board of Ed at 61.2% of that amount. Uh, I'm at, uh, two different proposals there, $5,500 a house on a single-family dwelling or $5,750. Both of those is less than, just under 50% of the max. And, uh, I don't think that, uh, my personal opinion is it'll impact the growth situation at all at that level. And taking into consideration that people are, uh, their own water, public water and sewer are paying capacity improvement fees on top of that, which adds another $5,000 or $6,000 per house. So I, I would be in that under six, but a little over five range is where I am, so.
So I got a question about that.
Sure.
Does, do these fees and the, and the, uh, improvement fees with the water, would that go automatically into their mortgage, or is that money they have to have upfront to build that project?
Those, those are money that they would pay when they come to get their permit.
So that's separate apart from their mortgage and whatever that's set up in the long term? That's a part of money they have to have to, to build a house?
So either the developer or the builder who's building the home, whether that be private residents or building their own home, when they come to get their building permit, when they file for their building permit, that fee will be due when they file for their building permit. Just like when you, if you're hooking into public water or public sewer, when you file for the permit to get the meter set, you'll pay the SIF fee when you go and meet, so that it's, it's paid upfront. Now, if they want to make an arrangements with their lender beforehand, they have that worked into the money that they're borrowing, that's on them, but that will be paid at the time of the, when the permit is, uh, filled out.
But that was my question. I, I imagine the lenders probably will allow them to work that into their overall cost.
I'm sure.
More than likely, yeah.
I think in most cases, it will already be, uh, done by the builder and then they'll, they'll just extend the cost of the home to cover that cost. Obviously, then if people are for the cost of the home, it's going to be included in that, self-included, so.
Well, my thought is, is I was close to where Eddie was at, at $5,000 per home. Um, I think there's a little wiggle room in there. I think this is something that our constituents of Berkeley County have been asking for. This is a direct growth paying for growth. Um, I know that we, when we implemented, and I was not here at that time, but when the Water Board and the Sewer Board implemented the capacity improvement fees on the water and sewer, um, they didn't, that did not really stymie or impede the building process at all. Uh, I think this is a revenue stream that the county can use for our growth, uh, without going back to put taxes on our property owners, which we tend to want to hit them, the same people all the time. So my, my thought process would be for the single-family, the county admin at $1,012, fire and rescue at, uh, say maybe $1,300, law enforcement 372, parks and rec 1721, and then the, uh, the remainder of that to get us to the $5,500 would be for the school board. And that's pulling a little bit of money out of the fire and rescue, but the fire and rescue will also still get some money from the, uh, industrial side, where the parks and recs and the school will not draw from the industrial, commercial, and office services side. So, uh, I, I think between the $5,000 and $5,500 is where I would, uh, want to be on the, on the impact fee.
Okay.
I'm still, uh, struggling with any kind of an impact fee, because it just does not answer, and we can't answer it with an impact fee as, as our road structures. Um, too many times I've heard it in, you know, in the meetings, that the roads and the schools, you know, this will provide something for the schools, but it still just doesn't do anything for the roads. And that's where we hear most of the complaints. And I don't know how to get the state to that point to where they, you know, they need to pony up here. And it just doesn't, it just doesn't compute to me too, too well.
Berkeley County, Berkeley County Department of Highways has 42 slots. So the state has found it in their infinite wisdom to give Berkeley County Department of Highways 42 slots for workers. At the present time, Berkeley County Department of Highways has 13 employees. Um, at one time, Berkeley County had, I believe, 42 state, state troopers. Current time, I believe Berkeley County has between 13 and 15 state troopers. So this continues to be a problem on a state level. Um, you know, that's just continually been a problem, that the state, uh, not having a fair pay schedule for the cost of living in the area is something that we're going to continue to battle, and, uh, has been recognized very clearly by the state representatives of the Eastern Pay Handle. Uh, the new governor of the great state of West Virginia has promised that he's going to, uh, look into this and try to do something with that. I'm hopeful in the very near future something like that happens, but, uh, we continue to struggle with the Department of Highways area and state police.
And the other thing, it, with the impact fees, that we, we've been asked to do for quite a while, uh, and we weren't able to until we had, uh, our lobbyists work and get the, get the law changed to allow us to, uh, impose impact fees. So otherwise, you gotta, you have to go back to the taxpayers and say, we need to raise this, or we need to raise that, because we, the fire, the fire service, that equipment today, uh, the, the prices of this equipment is just unbelievable now. I mean, a ladder truck now is $2.5 million. A normal basic pumper is right around a million dollars. You know, when they were at $500,000 or $600,000, we thought, okay, that's about where it's going to level out. Well, that didn't happen. It, it continues to, to rise. So this gives an opportunity to infuse money back into those agencies with hap, without having to go to the taxpayers and ask them for an increase in their fees. You know, we, we keep on, uh, going back and, and continually asking, and it's not because we want to, it's, it was because we have to. We have to keep these services up and running. We have to make sure that there are people to respond to these, uh, emergencies as, as needed. So, you know, I'm, I'm here in 55, I support a 55, I can live with that, I have no problems with that whatsoever. But I don't know if that is a consensus, I haven't heard from HD yet, um...
I'm, I'm, I'm good with 55. Sounds like a fair number.
Okay.
And, and this number's not carved in stone, this is just giving us a jumping off point today. And also, we can adjust this yearly, correct? Am I correct in saying that, Gary and Chad?
That is correct.
So we can, we can take a look at this number, and we, we have to do a reassessment every five years from our consultant...
Comprehensive plan.
Comprehensive plan, right? But we can adjust this number yearly.
Yes.
If we need to, if we feel we need to go up or we need to go down.
Yes, sir.
So, and, and I can reiterate what the president said there, that this is a, a revenue stream that I feel like the constituents have been asking for. Um, I, you know, as, as long as I'm, I'm here, I, I do not want to raise the levy rate. So I don't want our, our homeowners and our property owners to pay any more taxes because the levy rate's been raised. I don't want to go back to them with any other levies or bonds or anything that's going to be taxable upon their homes. I worry about our, I've, I've spoken about this, I worry about our senior population, um, our seniors that, that have been here for a long time. And also, we worry about our youth. I worry about our young people trying to buy homes in this community. So I think that this is a direct growth paying for growth. Uh, I think this is a reasonable amount to start with, and we can always make adjustments. So, uh, the consensus with me is at $5,500.
Very good. Okay, any other discussion on this?
It's not an answer to our needs, but it's a help. So it's a one source of revenue that doesn't go back to the property owners, right?
I will take that back to the consultant. I'll have them adjust those numbers and represent them to you as soon as that's done.
And work on the non-commercial side, too.
And the not, yes, and the researcher of the non-residential fees.
I think some large, it has to be square footage, it has to be different rate levels for different amounts of square footage.
Okay. So obviously, as the square footage gets larger, the rate would got, get smaller.
Yes.
And it would be broken in between commercial, industrial, services, there's going to be more categories in there for us to be able to look at.
We're housing, healthcare.
Yes.
All those. Okay, so I'm going to need a motion for the, uh, the public hearings.
Let's clarify, can I clarify one thing yet? Of the categories, we've got five selected. There were, there were three others, water and sewer with capacity improvement fees. Roads was a qualified thing, but if the state's taking care of a road, it'd be ludicrous for us to include roads into this. And the minimal amount that it would generate wouldn't have much of an effect anyway. So roads did qualify, though, uh, for impact fees, local impact fees, but if it's in a community that we were taking care of our roads, it'd be a different story.
Yeah, and that's a very slippery slope that we do not want to get involved in. If we start raising money for roads and all of a sudden the state is going to start asking us to take care of their responsibilities, so...
Absolutely.
With that being said, Mr. President, uh, I'll make the motion, uh, for the public hearings on June 17th, a public meeting, uh, at 10 o'clock here at the Dunn Building, and at 5 o'clock here at the Dunn Building. And then also, there would be another meeting on July 2nd at 10:00 AM. Here at the Dunn Building, they'll all be in the multipurpose room.
Be in here, the way it'll stream.
Okay. Be in here on those dates and times.
I'll second that motion.
Very good. Public movement, seconding further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, ayes have it. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
All right, next up, Anthony Delgetti, impact fee ordinance discussion.
Sorry I was out there, I had a tax appeal hearing that I had to jump on.
I'm telling you.
And I think you all discussed a lot of process moving forward, um, in terms of adopting impact and impact fee ordinance, um, have to either prior to or, uh, at the same time adopt a capital improvement plan. Here, the different fees, some of them are for capital improvements and some of them are, are broader. The statutes, the Local Powers Act's a little, uh, it's different than other states that have, have these sorts of impact fees. It has the eight types of capital improvements, and those are only, um, what is set out there. So, uh, it's primarily facilities and new facilities, not the replacement or, uh, maintenance or, uh, repair of an existing structure. But there's much broader in terms of the county services to where you could, uh, have an impact fee that provides for fire trucks or cruisers or building, um, upgrades and that sort of thing. And, and that's what you, that's what you have. Yes, public roads and rights of way are one of the, um, capital improvements that are permitted under the act. And the DOH currently does have an impact fee essentially, where it will require a road study and improvement upgrades if a development project has an impact on the roadway network. Clearly, it's not enough. It doesn't take care of the whole impact of a new development. So, and I'm not sure what standards they use. Certainly, it's not on every single development, it's only ones that, uh, trigger. And, and it's, yeah, it's something that's not in this ordinance and something that you're not going to get into. In terms of, I mean, I drafted a just base ordinance there for, for you all to work off of. Certainly, rates and everything need to be, uh, determined and what you're spending the money on. The one thing that wasn't really discussed, uh, when Tischler Bice folks were here or before was, so because an impact fee just broadly increases all purchases of homes, it, the legislature in 2012 or so, might have been a different year, uh, required that there must be an adjustment for low-income housing. So you're not just making all housing, uh, less affordable, um, and especially those that are at, at the lower end of the, uh, the cost of housing. So what that, what Jefferson County does, and I think what we would do, and what's in this ordinance, is to just have an application. Uh, there's a, it has to be based on these numbers that are produced by the State Tax Department on the average, uh, home price in a county. And then it would be a proportional reduction as it relates to that. The assessor has to, uh, come in and put a value on that prior to, uh, fee being paid. So, uh, there will be some design proposed, and the assessor has to come in. If they fill out an application and say, well, we believe this is below the average home value, there should be a reduction, uh, then it would go to the assessor to put a value on it, and then whoever's collecting the fee, if the county commission... So it does, it's a little less regressive than originally as it was in Jefferson County. But it also adds a little bit of complication in terms of administering the fee.
So you're saying there's a piece in this ordinance that says for a lower income housing, that there can be a modification through this process of the impact fee?
Correct. The Local Powers Act requires that you have, if you have any impact fees on, on, uh, you must have a, um, reduction for low-income housing.
Is this a fairly simple process, or is it very onerous? I mean, what is, what, what?
So...
Who determines if it's low in, income?
There's a formula by the state.
Well, the, the State Tax Department produces the, um, residential housing index. And then, and that number will change annually, so...
So the state produces a housing index?
For, for each county that shows the average price of a single-family dwelling.
That would be pretty easy to adapt in locality pay, wouldn't it? Use that for lo, to, for adaptation for locality pay?
There's no way to do that math. You couldn't do it. Of course it would. Housing costs are certainly more here than in other parts of the state.
Sorry, I just get my digs in where I can.
Um, I, I mean, I don't know how many, um, new homes would actually qualify. It also has in there for, for new mobile homes, that those, that there, that should be based on the National Automobile Dealers Association Book, the average...
NADA.
Uh, which, I don't know how much more difficult it makes these. I mean, most new housing developments probably wouldn't be applying for it, but I don't know.
Anthony, I did read through this, this, actually last night and again this morning. But other, other, um, opportunities there, that if somebody loses their home, uh, through fire or a tornado or something of that nature, that they would not have to...
Correct. Uh, it, it does not, an impact fee does not include the rebuilding of a structure. If there's some natural disaster, arson, anything like that, it wouldn't.
And, and the same would apply to commercial or industrial...
Correct.
...properties as well.
Of course.
Do I also have any questions, uh, on the ordinance as presented? Like Anthony says, there's, there's still a lot of moving parts.
There's a lot of moving parts, and Jefferson County has, um, a bunch of different ordinances. They have a process ordinance, which is kind of our section one, and then... And then each individual fee, we could certainly do it that way. Where you can just do it as one and amend it as you wish, whenever, I mean.
I would like to try to keep it as simple as possible. And then if we need to make amendments as we go, if special, you know, circumstances show up and we need to make amendments as we go, I would like to try to keep it as simple as possible and understandable. As legalese can be.
Yeah.
I mean, I assume under like the residential, you got single-family, you got multifamily and mobile home. So that if you, if we chose the maximum rate for county administration of $1,012 for that, then we would stay at the maximum rate for the other two. If we choose, like in the school board instance, where they qualify for over $7,000 and they get a lot less, it'll be based, the other two would be based on that percentage as well of what we use for the single-family dwelling.
Yeah, I mean, everything's got, has to be based on its proportionate share of what additional services or improvements are needed for that specific development.
Here's where I'm confused though, all right? You clarify this for me between you and Chad. So if we go the maximum on the residential for county administration, we don't have to do that for the non-commercial as well, or do we?
So, no, I mean, most places that have impact fees don't have it on commercial.
But I've heard different sides of this story now. I've heard that you do in some cases. So that if you reduce one, you have to reduce the other the same amount of percentage, so.
Well, I mean, that's all, there's nothing specific in the statute. It's all just, well, is, there's a number of potential risks. One, if you go above what your proportional share is, then it's a taking. It's a violation of due process clause and...
And I don't think there's any intention to do that.
No.
And courts have been cracking down on these a lot.
But answering my question.
Other issue is equal protection in terms of, is that something that, is that a rational thing to discriminate based on?
So we discriminate against the homeowners if we go the maximum rate, but we don't on the commercial?
Yeah, and those maximum rates, I'm not sure where those, where it came up with because it has the same amount for commercial services or each of these categories. Whereas, I wouldn't think that commercial would need the same amount relative to residential on each of these particular fees. The lower the rate, the lower the fees, the less likely there is any sort of potential issue with it. And just kind of tailoring it to what is actually, what demand for public services is actually being created by the development.
Basically, if we're being fair to the commercial and industrial side, we're not going to have any problems, right? And I would say if we're doing, if we're going 100% on county admin, fire rescue, law enforcement, and parks and rec, and let's say the school board comes out, I'm just going to make up a number, 30%, on the multifamily and the mobile home, you would still use 30% of that number.
Use that same ratio for the other two. Yeah, whatever that percentage is.
So, on the commercial side of this, is it still at the $11,000 max? Or is that another?
It's just housing number.
Yeah, it's based on square footage.
Okay.
Which is, I believe, their estimation on the amount of jobs at a facility which creates demand for public services. It's much tougher to figure out a commercial sort of fee for, that's just applicable across the board. The water and sewer fees, they're based on how much water usage you're going to use. And the ones for roads are based on how much traffic is generated and they do study. Whereas this, it's just broadly saying, well, square footage is an estimation of what sort of demand you're going to create for services, which if not tailored right, could create some results we may not want. And I think you guys talked about some of that.
All right, anybody else got anything else?
The largest impact is from the homes, no question. If you build 1,400 new homes a year, that's the impact. That's the, you can't blame that on the commercial side of it. You can have commercial growth without any residential growth at all.
And...
I mean, it does affect it some, but obviously, to me, it's the fact that we're building 1,200 to 1,500 new homes a year, that is causing the greatest impact on our services and our infrastructure.
And I think input from the public and businesses or businesses that might want to locate or build structures might be helpful as to how to figure out what that fee should be.
Very good. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have a reason for executive session today? Okay, well, that's a good thing.
We don't need to vote on the ordinance?
No, it's just for discussion today. All right, that's cool. Bring us to the close of our business today. The motion to... Oh, the items from the public. Need a motion to recess.
Mr. President, I move we recess.
We're in recess. Thank you.